All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 22nd, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're starting a little late tonight. We went into executive session at 6:00 to discuss a strategy respected to collective bargaining or litigation, and now we're coming back into regular session. Can I have another roll call, please?
All five. Selectman of present as well as town council and town administrator.
All right. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Swenson, you can... Yes, can I... How about doing the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to skip by announcements and stuff because we have a dog hearing that we have to do. It was supposed to be scheduled for 7:15. And in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of Massachusetts General Laws, you hereby notify that a public hearing will be held before the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 7:15 regarding the dogs owned or kept by Calvin Carnes. Is it Carnes? And so, for the purposes of the hearing, I'm going to turn it over to Peter to perform the hearing because, you know, he's a lawyer and all that, so we give him some things to do once in a while.
I think it's correct.
Here's your file. All right?
Yep.
He's a dog lawyer.
He's a dog lawyer, in fact.
Remember that. I've gotten dogs off of death row, so yes, I am. Okay. We need a motion to open the hearing with a roll call vote, please.
So moved.
Need a second. Open the hearing. Motion by Selectman Bruce, second by Selectman Denise. Roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay, the hearing is open. Would the animal control officer please read the complaint letter into the record?
Hang on. I know we got to hear. There I go. September 26, 2019. I hereby make complaint hereon that dogs owned or harbored by Calvin Carnes, 11 Barrett Way in Onset, Mass., are nuisance by reason of, number one, continuous barking. Starting on September 8, 2017, to this day, the Department of Natural Resources has had an ongoing barking dog issue with the above-named dog owner Calvin Carnes. We have issued numerous citations to the dog owner without resolution. Our department also made numerous suggestions on possible solutions to the ongoing barking dog situation with no avail. The complaints have included video evidence, officer confirmation that the situation continues to be an issue. The multiple dogs owned by Mr. Carnes described as four cane corso's are reported to be left outside at all hours of the day and night. The dogs are reported to bark nonstop while they are outside. In addition, we have had numerous complaints that these same dogs are frequently allowed to run free in the area. Mr. Carnes has been notified in writing of these complaints and failed to resolve the issue. Mr. Carnes' neighbors have requested that greater measures be taken and would like to have a hearing before the Board of Selectmen in regards to this matter.
Okay. Thank you. Would everybody who intends to testify tonight, whether it's on behalf of the dogs or complaining about the dogs, please rise. Hold up your right hands. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Mr. Carnes.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. You may be seated. It's still your turn.
Well, what I'd like to do at this point is we have quite a few of the neighbors who would like to speak on their personal experiences with the dog because there's some disagreeing on whether or not the complaints are factual. So what I'd like to do is have the neighbors come up and speak about their personal experiences and then allow the dog owner to give his side.
Okay. Just for your information, Mr. Carnes, you are allowed to cross-examine the witnesses when they come up. So if they say something, if you don't agree with it, you're allowed to ask them questions about what they've just said. Your questions, after they're done speaking, you can't interrupt them. If there's... And you have to keep your cross-examination limited to what the person has just said. You can't go far afield with that. But can we have the first neighbor come up and identify themselves, please? Somebody's got to be first.
Should we have the dog owner come up as well?
Yeah. He should be sitting here as well, so he's...
Sure. Okay.
Pull that nice and close, okay?
Okay.
So you can be heard.
Okay. Can you hear me?
There you go.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. My name is Eve Marie Azzeltine. I live at 7 Barrett Way. I've lived there for about six years, and with all of the dogs that Calvin has had, I've never called to complain. I've never filed any reports. But I recently retired about a year ago, and I'm home more often, and the dogs have been barking constantly, all hours of the day and nighttime as well. And it's annoying. It's frustrating. I've sent a few reports through the town, and it just never seemed to help until they decided to do a hearing. You know, I kind of feel bad for the dogs as well. I know there's a lot of squirrels in the neighborhood, and I'm sure they're barking at the squirrels or barking at whatever. But when it's two or three hours and all hours of the night, you know, I kind of feel bad for the dogs. You know, they're just... Something's bothering them, you know, and they need to be taken care of. I never see them out walking, the dogs. I never, you know... I just kind of feel bad for the dogs, and I would like something to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Members of the board, are there any questions for this witness? No? Mr. Carnes, do you have any questions in cross-examination?
Well, the only thing I got to say is that you said they're barking all times and nights, but, you know, at what time are we talking? I mean, are we talking, you know, for the past three years or four years? Or, I mean, we're talking last month, two months ago? Because when I did get the complaints, I basically went out and I basically took some advice.
Okay. You've got to let her just answer the question you asked, so...
Let her answer the question.
Yes, let her answer the question, please.
Well, it seemed to be not so much in the morning, but like around 2:00 in the afternoon, 2:00, 2:30, until 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 at night. A few times, even 11:00 at night, I've been woken up. 1:00 in the morning, I was woken up out of a sound sleep, but the dogs barking. In the summertime, the windows are open, you hear more. Okay. Wait.
No further questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who'd like, from the neighborhood, who'd like to come up and testify, please?
The gates are open now.
Yep.
Exactly. We've got the icebreaker.
My name is Patricia Morrison. I live at 14 Barrett Way, and I've lived there for many years. The dogs... I'm right across the street from the Carnes', and I've talked to Calvin many times. My sons, I know this is here, say, have talked to him. He's always very congenial. Yes, I'll do something about it. A day goes by, two days go by, the dogs are barking. Sunday, the dogs were barking, and then Calvin took a couple of dogs with him. It was quiet. He came back. He was home. His wife was home. I don't know if anyone else was there. And they barked off and on for two hours, and I'm sitting in my living room, and there they are. And these are very big dogs. They're on a run, and they have, I don't know, a wire thing that holds them, and they can go practically to the street, and I'm scared of them. I leave my house, the minute I open my door, the dogs are barking, and they're up on their hind legs, and they scare me. I have to look to see where they are to make sure they're not loose, because they have gotten loose several times. As a matter of fact, a couple of Sundays ago, my neighbor was, I think, mowing her lawn, that I'm in my house, I hear Mr. Carnes yelling, "I'm sorry, sorry," and he's holding on to one of the dogs in the middle of the road. And this is not the first time this has happened. This has happened several times, and these dogs are big. And he... They're, like I said, they're... Two of them are in the front yard, and the thing that they're on is long enough so they can actually touch the street. They're not fully in the street, but they're there. And I, like I said...
I don't mean to interrupt, but the complaint that's before us tonight is for...
Yes, a nuisance.
Is a barking situation? We don't have a complaint for dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs?
I'll just keep it to that.
So we're really not in a position to address that tonight?
I'll just keep it to that. Saturday night, I was a little after 11:00. Mr. Carnes came home, and I was sound asleep. I only know that because I heard the doors shutting and everything. And many times, he takes two of the dogs, or one of the dogs, I don't know how many now, with him, because I know he tries, but he gets out, and sometimes they're running around, and then they're barking. And then Saturday night, one of the dogs was out there barking for 10 or 15 minutes. Now, this was like after 11:00 at night, so now I'm awake. This has been going on for my... It didn't happen?
I don't recall that happening.
Well, it worked.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
All right.
Yeah. No by-play between the two until the sister in the cross-examine.
I'm a little nervous.
That's okay. That's fine.
So, I mean, this has been going on for more than a few months, and I don't... You know, I've seen four dogs. Sometimes they're in his yard barking. Sometimes there's two dogs in the yard barking. Sometimes it's in on two... Another property. There's two dogs barking there. One supposedly, I don't know this for a fact, is his daughter's, which is also kept there. And this is going on day and night. Doesn't... It could be early morning if he's going to work, or if his truck is gone, he takes the two dogs, and the other dogs are in the house. But you can't even go outside because the dogs are out on the deck. I go to my neighbors to have a conversation with him. You can't have a conversation in his yard because the dogs are barking the whole time you're standing there trying to talk. I guess that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Now you have an opportunity, if you'd like to ask any questions.
Well, the only thing I want to say is that the dogs, I mean, they should be able to be on the back porch, and we're talking the back porch, not the front porch. So recently, I've been definitely trying not to put the dogs out front. They've been more on the back porch, and that's all I want to say, that they're mostly on the back porch, and if someone should walk by, a dog is... A dog's going to bark because they're not familiar with that person.
And I agree. I agree. I've had dogs my whole life, but the dogs don't just stop then. They just keep on barking, and sometimes they bark for 45 minutes, an hour, maybe longer than that.
Okay.
Well, I'll address that when it's my turn.
Great.
I will. I'll address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's John Terrell, and I live at number nine Barrett Way, right next to Mr. Carnes. And when he says that he puts his dogs on the back porch... My house is right on the water, my summer house, and his dogs would then be about 30 feet from my house. And if he's got them out back yapping, I cannot have a conversation. And this has been going on for years, and I think he's tried to muffle these dogs, but to no avail. Yesterday, I had a conversation with a neighbor and his brother that was in from Las Vegas, and we couldn't talk because the dogs were either fighting or barking. And I have never called Animal Control until about three weeks ago. I didn't document the exact date, but it was a Friday night, and I don't know how dogs physically, biologically, can bark steady for three hours, but they were barking from 7:30 to 9:30 on a Friday night about a month ago. And at that point, I had to call Animal Control and said, "I've had enough." And so, "I hate to bother you with such a trivial matter. This should be resolved between neighbors," and apparently it can't. It hasn't been done till now, and so we're asking you for some assistance in that so that we all can get along peacefully, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for this witness on the board?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Carnes?
The only question I want to ask you is that I don't recall you coming to me and say, "Hey, can you do anything about this?" You've never come to me. I've been living in Barrett Way for 15 years, you know? And I don't cause no trouble. I don't make no noise. The only issue I think that my neighbors have with me is the dogs, you know? And they just say, "How come you didn't just come to me?"
Okay.
You know, we could have tried, you know, make some arrangements to do something to make it more comfortable for you.
Okay. Mr. Carnes, I think you've made your point. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Stephen Hurley, 3 Barrett Way. Arrived there last October, so we're newbies. I worked for 32 years in the city that I grew up in, on the North Shore, and people would move in and want to change things. I don't want to do that. Also, people move into a new neighborhood, try to put their stamp on the neighborhood. I don't want to do that. Don't want to pile on with Mr. Carnes either. But since we moved in, morning, noon, and night, the dogs have been barking, and I would gladly approach you, Mr. Carnes, but there's no way I'm going near your house. So if you want to give me your phone number, maybe we can give you a call and we can hook up someplace, but I ain't going near that house. And so, you know, I'm a patient guy. Don't want to cause any problems for any of our neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors and get along with everybody. But probably about two weeks ago now, I called the police, and it was about 7:00 on a Sunday night, and they said, referred me, and I left a message for the animal control officer. And it was answered, and I was informed of this meeting. So, I mean, you don't want to be a jerk about things, but something's got to be done. I mean, you know, I feel bad for you, Mr. Carnes. I really do. But we need a break.
Okay. Any questions for this witness on the board?
I just... I don't... I mean, I've never met you before, but you said you live at number three. I mean, I don't even know how far away that is, but...
Next to John. John separates us. John Terrell.
Oh, so that's number three. Oh, that's pretty close.
Stop by anytime.
That's pretty close. No questions. No more questions.
Okay. Thanks.
I just thought it was far down.
Yep. Okay. Do we have anyone else from the neighborhood?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Frangiatis. I live at 16 Barrett Way, directly across from Mr. Carnes and his family. I'd like to reiterate all of my neighbors' concerns in terms of excessive barking for multiple hours on end at various times of night. My own experience has included the dogs coming at me barking on two separate occasions. One, late in the evening, when I arrived home at night, and they came out of my driveway or out of nowhere. I didn't see them. They were loose, two of them, and circled my vehicle, barking and jumping and lunging. I didn't know what to do other than lay on my horn. Mr. Carnes came out and struggled to collect the dogs. He did collect the dogs, and I got into my house safely. It was quite alarming, to say the least. And on a second occasion, I was out mowing the lawn, and the dog... The dogs were on a leash. My back was to the street. When I turned, the dog was barking loose on my shoulder or, you know, directly behind me, which I had not heard because of the mower, and that was 11:00 on a Sunday.
Okay. Any questions for this witness on the board?
Nope.
Mr. Carnes?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that everyone?
One more gentleman, at least.
Andrew Gallagher, number 6 Barrett Way. I have heard the dogs barking. I don't know exactly when. I don't know exactly what time of day, but they bark more than I would like, and I've never contacted Mr. Carnes or anyone else about the complaint, but I would just like to testify to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Carnes?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that everyone?
One more gentleman, at least.
Andrew Gallagher, number 6 Barrett Way. I have heard the dogs barking. I don't know exactly when. I don't know exactly what time of day, but they bark more than I would like, and I've never contacted Mr. Carnes or anyone else about the complaint, but I would just like to testify to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Carnes?
No questions.
Okay. Thanks. Okay.
So I'd like to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
So, just for the record, I've been trying to work with Mr. Carnes. He's always been very receptive. He has made numerous attempts to resolve the situation. I've tried to work with him multiple times, and he's never given me a hard time, so I just want to say that. You know, he seems like he wants to fix the situation, and he doesn't want all of his neighbors angry at him, and so we've tried to work with him. The thing is, is that, as you can see, I'm getting the same type of a complaint from all of the neighbors on the road. It's a relatively short road. It's a dead-end road, and it's pretty much every house on the road. A couple of people have complained that didn't come tonight. The police department have received complaints where they've actually gone out there, the dogs are barking, but nobody's home. I've gone there, and I've actually sat two houses down, and the dogs were on the back porch, and I could hear the dogs barking. I actually called Mr. Carnes and said, you know, "Is anybody home? You got to bring the dogs in. They're barking. They're on the back porch. They've been barking for over 20 minutes." And he got ahold of his wife, and, you know, she did come. I have a cell phone. Been, again, trying to work with him. He always apologizes. The dogs... We have three dogs that are licensed there. He says he only owns three dogs. Some people have mentioned a fourth. I have not physically seen the fourth dog, so the three dogs that are there are legally licensed. Anytime they've been loose, it seems that it has been accidental. However, cane corso's are very large dogs. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they're...
Yeah, they're big, strong.
Like the size of a Great Dane. They're a big dog. They're scary just to look at, and so they may not be dangerous and aggressive. They may just be running around, but just size alone is very scary, and their bark is a very loud bark, so it can be heard as far away as the beginning houses on the road. So we definitely want to fix this solution. The people on the street have had enough, and I do have some suggestions. He's tried to take the suggestions I've made and work with them, so I'd like to give him the opportunity to explain what he's done to try and...
Yeah. He has that chance.
Rectify the situation, but that's where we are right now.
Just so he can address... We'll just sort of cut to the chase here. Usually, we wait for your recommendations until after the dog owner has testified, but in this instance, I want him to hear what you have to say. I think that's appropriate. So why don't you give us what you would propose for the situation? And then that way, he has an opportunity to respond to that as well.
So, these would be my suggestions to the board to try and resolve the situation. Number one, to take all reasonable measures, including but not limited to supervised or limited outdoor excursions. That would include the deck. And/or use of construction of a visual opaque barrier between the street and the yard or the deck and his neighbor's property so that the dogs can't see people walking by the house, the dogs can't see people at the neighbor's house, so it obstructs their view. Number two, to take all reasonable measures, including but not limited to possible use of a muzzle, if that's what it takes to stop the dogs from barking. Number three, in addition to the above measures, to supervise any outside excursions between prior to 8:00 a.m. and after 9:00 p.m. so that there is no barking. So literally, if those dogs are out there after 9:00 p.m. or before 8:00 a.m., somebody is with them, they're literally doing what they need to do and being brought in, not allowed to bark. In addition to that, because we've had numerous loose dog complaints, I would ask that the dogs be humanely restrained and that the dogs be confined outdoors in a securely enclosed, locked pen so that we no longer have problems with the dogs getting loose. It could include the deck, but it has to be in such a manner that these dogs cannot get loose.
Just any questions for Cheryl at this point? I do have one myself. Have there been any Leash Law violation citations issued?
He actually has multiple citations been issued for both loose and barking, and right now, we have $475 in outstanding fines.
Okay. I mean, I am concerned that the complaint relates to barking dogs, and that's the only nuisance complained of here is the barking in the actual complaint, so I don't know that we can really act in terms of restraining the dogs until we get a subsequent complaint that identifies them as dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs. I think we're kind of hamstrung in that regard tonight. But at this point, Mr. Carnes, you've heard everybody speak. What would you like to say in response to what's been stated tonight, and also in response to the recommendations that the animal control officer has made?
Well, the recommendations, I agree with those. I agree with those recommendations, and I did put together something I wanted to read. My daughter's going to read it for me.
That's fine.
But the animal control person, Cheryl, I would like to take her recommendations and do that, because I think if I did block the porch where they couldn't see John on his side and the other side, it's really a dead end on that side, but I can block both sides so that there's no visual... They can't see anyone, and then that would probably limit their barking. And then there's some other things that we've done, and it's going to be in the letter. If you don't mind, if you could read that for you.
No, absolutely. Just identify yourself, ma'am.
Absolutely. My name is Kayla Carnes. I'm Calvin's eldest daughter. Hello, everybody. Okay. So he has prepared a written statement, and I'll read it on his path.
Thanks.
To all this matter, to all this matter may concern. My dog had four puppies 14 months ago. Until about three months ago, I noticed my dogs... I noticed my dogs were getting bigger and barking when people would walk by. I thought it would be better to put them on the back porch. I also purchased an indoor kennel, six feet by 10 feet, and a six-foot by 10-foot outdoor kennel. I also purchased a bark box for the inside...
Which is here. It's a bark box. ...and a bark box for the outside.
I realize the barking is a major problem for my neighbors. I am doing everything I can to fix this problem. I also invested in cameras...
These are the bark boxes.
...so I can monitor my dogs while at work. I can see them. I can hear them, and they can hear me.
This is the camera setup that I just purchased so I could see them.
Yep.
Last week, my kids enrolled the puppies into classes for multiple behavioral issues, the main one being barking at PetSmart in Buzzards Bay. At this time, I have three dogs, the mother and two of her puppies. I will continue to work on the barking and their overall behavior.
and barking when people would walk by. I thought it would be better to put them on the back porch. I also purchased an indoor kennel, six feet by 10 feet, and a six-foot by 10-foot outdoor kennel. I also purchased a bark box for the inside...
Which is here. It's a bark box.
And a bark box for the outside. I realize the barking is a major, is a major problem for my neighbors. I am doing everything I can to fix this problem. I also invested in cameras...
These are the bark boxes.
So I can monitor my dogs while at work. I can see them. I can hear them. They can, and they can hear me.
This is the camera setup that I just purchased, so I could see them.
Yep.
Last week, my kids enrolled the puppies into classes for multiple behavioral issues, the main one being barking, at PetSmart in Buzzards Bay. At this time, I have three dogs, the mother and two of her puppies. I will continue to work on the barking and their overall behavior. I will invest into a dog walker as soon as I can find the right dog walker. And I am interviewing now using the Rover app. I want to extend my apologies for the barking and making my neighbors uncomfortable around the neighborhood. Sincerely, Kearns.
Okay. Thank you.
There's one more.
There is, there is one more. This is from another neighbor who couldn't be here. And this is written on his behalf as well.
Okay.
This is Robert Collins. It has been my experience with the dogs here that they are friendly and curious young pets. They are generally quiet with respects to pedestrian and intrusion. And while may, and while maybe intimidating, they have merely come close and have stopped and have accepted petting. Sincerely, Robert Collins.
Okay, thank you.
And I also have the receipt for the classes, for the training classes here, and the receipt also for the dog kennels.
Which we have two large kennels. I'm going to put those into action right away. It's, it's actually, right now, it's inside the garage, but I'm just trying to figure out where I'm going to put it right now, you know, because it's, it's six by 10, so it's pretty big. I have two of them. But I'm going to install them.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any questions for me or anything?
No, thank you very much. So taken in some, you don't, Mr. Kearns, you don't dispute that the dogs have been barking excessively?
No, I don't dispute it.
Okay. And you, I did hear you say, I think twice, that you agreed with the recommendations of the animal control officer, and that you would, you would go ahead and undertake those?
Absolutely, absolutely. But recently, I've been doing as much as I can to keep them quiet and not have them out in the yard. They're not in the yard during the day. When I leave for work, I take them in. And probably up until maybe a month, maybe a month and a half, I don't leave them on the back porch anymore at all, because obviously, it's getting dark at 6 o'clock. It's getting cold. So they're not on the back porch. They're inside the house. And so the barking should be definitely, it should be different from what it was two months ago, when it was the dead of the summer, 90 degrees, and, you know, I don't know if that had anything to do with it, but it was pretty hot. I couldn't keep the dogs in the house, and I have to work too, so. But I'm willing to do what I can do to make this, this barking issue go away.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kearns from the board?
How old are the puppies?
They're 14 months.
So, yeah, they're, they're full-size dogs.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty big, for 14 months.
And the bark box, is that a barking collar? Is it an anti-barking collar?
Yeah. One is a barking collar. I have a barking collar for one of them.
Does it affect them at all, or no?
The, the barking collar works, but I think they, probably about two weeks ago, one of them tore the barking collar off the other one, so I had to buy another one. So I have to, I'm going to reinstall the barking collar, and I'm sure that's going to help.
The second dog didn't reciprocate by ripping it off the first dog?
But this one is a bark box for outside control, which I, I use it. It's so small, I didn't, I'm looking at it, is this thing really going to work? So I'm trying things too, to see, you know, what's going to work. But this is what they recommend, so I purchased it. And I think it helps a little bit, but the only problem with that is, it's battery-operated, and it goes dead pretty quick. So I have to keep changing the batteries. And this one is for inside. And so this one also, it does okay. It doesn't, it's not foolproof. It's not 100% foolproof. So, you know, until they're, until they're trained to not tear up the house, then they won't be in their kennels. But when they're inside, they're in the kennels.
Yep.
You know, because I have to control them. They have to learn. That's why we're putting them in school to train them properly.
You have outside kennels. You're going to have stockade fencing, so that, or some sort of fencing that they can't see over?
Yes, on the, on the back porch, because that's what it'll be primarily.
Yeah, thank you.
Definitely.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Kearns at this point? Any final questions for the animal control officer?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I know I'm not part of it, but you said there was outstanding fines. What's your recommendation with those?
So he can appeal the fines. It's going to go through Wareham District Court at this point. It's out of our hands.
Has it, has an appeal been filed?
We were just discussing that today.
One of the things, just for Mr. Kearns's benefit here, we have passed a bylaw that allows us to tack town fines onto, basically a property tax bill, and collect them that way. So we do have the ability now to go ahead and collect them.
I know this sounds counter to, to my usual stance, but I'd much rather see the money going towards these measures than, than a fine. So if he's purchasing things, and that's helping out, that's where I'd rather see the money go. But that's just me.
Wow, Derek.
Wow.
Write this down.
Take his temperature. He's feverish.
Can I get a picture, get you a video?
Yeah, exactly.
I like that idea.
He's the cheapest person you've ever run into. That's kind of what we're getting at here.
Mr. Kearns, I want to tell you something. We had somebody before who owed fines and was persistent about not paying them. And in the result, we took the dogs away, and we wouldn't give them back until we got our money. So just so you know, that's an option that's available to us. So not that we want to hold on to those big dogs.
No.
We take, we're going to send them to Derek's house.
Yeah, exactly.
Costs me more to feed them.
I don't think they're going to fit my truck. I'm just saying.
You're not going to fit in the truck. You've got to...
He's already got a big dog, so what's three more? But anyway...
I want to prevent the problem. I don't want to continue to incur fines. I'm not going to try.
Your daughter...
Prevent the problem.
I just had a question about, about that. I thought it was an option for the money...
Yeah, you've got to come up to the microphone, actually, because it's not being picked up out there.
Oh, okay.
I thought that it was an option for the money to go to all of these, all of these options for him.
Never been, no.
No, typically, a fine's a fine.
I mean, Derek has just offered that to you, though.
No, that's great. And I thought that that was something that we could have taken advantage of.
So what happened when he first came in with the very first citation is, I told him, you know, my goal is to resolve the situation, that I would hold the citation for 10 days, and if I received no additional complaints, that I would not put the citation in. Because we all want the same thing. We all want the situation resolved. But like I told Mr. Kearns today, unfortunately, the complaints continued to come in. So these were new complaints.
Understood, completely understood, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
That is true.
Angie has another question, apparently.
Yep.
Thanks.
I'd just like to ask a clarifying question. We all identified ourselves by name and address, and there was one letter that was read into the record by Robert Collins that wasn't identified by address. And I'd like to know if we have that address available.
Yeah, she, do you know the address of Mr. Collins, please?
Yeah, Levin Barrett Way.
Eleven?
He's a tenant. Yes.
Eleven?
He's a tenant at Levin Barrett Way. Thank you.
Yeah.
The owner of Levin's Barrett Way is actually here.
Okay.
Okay. You want to close the hearing?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Alan? Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep.
Me, yes. Okay, just to reiterate the recommendations from the animal control officer, take all reasonable measures, including but not limited to supervised or limited outdoor excursions, and/or the use of construct, and/or use of construction of a visual opaque barrier between the street and yard. So that's just some kind of fencing that obstructs their view. To take all reasonable measures, including but not limited to the use of a muzzle. And the third one, in addition to the above measures, to supervise any outdoor excursion prior to 8:00 a.m. or after 9:00 p.m. daily, so as to assure no excessive barking occurs. Alan?
Are we going to impose a timeframe? Are we going to impose a timeframe when they'll come back, as far as whether this is working or not?
Well, that would, that would result in a subsequent complaint from the animal control officer. That would be the process.
I mean, because you could be three or four days down the road, and they could have a complaint again.
How long to comply with the orders? Is that what you mean?
Well, I, I think that when, when the orders are issued, they stay in place. I mean, these aren't something, this isn't something that goes away, as is the case with a potentially dangerous dog, where it's deemed that for two years, and then it goes away.
No, it's not.
Alan's saying, give them two weeks to comply and get a fence up and stuff like that.
I want to make sure the neighbors know that there's a timeframe, that this isn't working. They have some rights to go back.
To get a fencing company in, or to put a fence up, I mean, I'd give somebody 30 days, to be honest with you. I wouldn't give two weeks. You're not necessarily going to get somebody, especially while the weather's still decent, and they're out, they're flat out now, trying to get stuff going here. I think for that, for that aspect of it, he's going to need some time to get it done. I don't think it's fair to expect them to get it done within a week.
What do you think is fair?
A couple of weeks, I think, is sufficient, because I, I think that's very important, and that's going to help with the, the barking.
Okay, if you're willing...
If I get a couple of weeks, I can do it within a couple of weeks. I can get a fence barricade on the back porch.
That suggests that we go to three weeks, we can get the barrier up and everything, everything settles at that point. Because that's, even two weeks is a little tight to get everything in place.
Yep.
But again, I want to make sure the neighbors are secure, and they feel safe in what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I move that we accept the...
I just, I just had one observation about number two here. I am concerned about using a muzzle to silence dogs in the summertime. That interferes with their ability to breathe in the heat. I think if the other countermeasures are taken, I think if he uses his bark collars and gets them to stop ripping them off each other, that he'll, he'll have the kind of success that would remove the need to use a muzzle. So I don't know that, my personal feeling is, I would not muzzle a dog in the summertime.
Yes, a muzzle was only if no other options worked.
Okay. Yeah, I think she made that clear.
Okay.
I move we approve the conditions set by the, the officer, and that we give him 21 days to comply.
Okay, we have a motion for Patrick, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500. You will get a letter from the selectman's office stating that we had this hearing, that we had these, that you agreed to these conditions, and these are what the conditions are.
Okay.
So, you know, please, please do your best.
I will, I will.
I'm sure this wasn't pleasant for you. And I'm sure your neighbors would have had something better to do tonight as well, so.
Absolutely.
We hope never to see you again in this regard.
I hope not. I'll do my best.
I think we're all on the same page with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you to all the witnesses who came tonight.
And when you leave the room, leave quietly, please. All right, because we've got a long schedule. I'm sorry. All right, next up, I'm going to move to Jackie. Why don't you come down? Jackie's here for a charter review committee interview. We actually put this off for Alan.
That's correct.
So that he could be here for the, for the vote.
Okay.
All right. Now, does anybody have any more questions of Jackie?
Not directly. One piece that I'm concerned about is the timeframe that we set while I was away for Yom Kippur. We went ahead and voted on something as well. And because we're into November, December virtually now, there is no way that a charter review committee's going to function and have something ready by the first, in May, for actual, even reports going to be tight. I think we can have the report in May, but I think we basically need to allow them to continue. And if they want a warrant, let's come back at the fall town meeting.
Okay, actually, we can't change our vote. We have to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
So I'll put it back on, and we can talk about it on another time.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
But in the meantime, how about Jackie?
I'll make a motion up front to go ahead and approve her file. I've gone through her application.
I'll second that.
There's no reason not to.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Jim. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you so much, Jackie. I appreciate you.
Jackie, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, Jackie, thanks.
And thanks for coming. And you were, it was exciting to have you.
And thank, thank you for your interest. That's what I told all the other applicants.
Good luck.
All right, we're going to go back to announcements, and see if we can get this stuff out of the way in a hurry. First off, citizens' comments. Is there anybody here to talk to us? All right, come on down, Madam Moderator.
Is she Madam Moderator, or is she Citizen Smith?
Yeah, might be. Okay.
Thank you. Claire Smith, Town Moderator. I just want to let people and remind them that town meeting is Monday, but I just wanted to alleviate some things that people are feeling about electronic voting. Nothing about town meeting is going to change in any way, shape, or manner, other than the way the vote is taken. It's pretty simple, and actually, we will have, it will be a one-page instruction of, we'll have these out in the hallway. I actually did a 28 by 36 poster that we'll put up there. And it is on the motion slide, so that as people come in, they'll be able to see very easily what they need to do. So what's going to happen is, we will go through town meeting in the exact same way that we do every year. The motion will be up on the screen. They can debate it. They can talk about it. When there's no more discussion, I will call for the vote. And when I call for the vote, then it's time to vote. And you either press button number one for yes, or button number two for no. And there'll be a time that they can have to, to place their vote, and they can change to the vote at any time during that voting period. And what you'll see up on the screen is, the motion will change to a, a different slide that has the motion, but it has a timer on it. As people are voting, you'll actually see the votes coming in. And you'll see how many no, yeses are coming in, how many nos are coming in, and it just will just add up. And when we get to the point where we feel that all of the votes are pretty close, a timer will come up on the screen for 10 seconds. And I will then say to you, we have 10 seconds left to cast your vote. When that 10 seconds goes down to zero, voting is over. It's instantaneously noted on the, on the screen what the vote is. So it's pretty simple. The only thing I would ask is, if people try to come a little earlier, because they do have to pick up their handheld device, and they have to check in. And the devices are on a lanyard, so that they can put it around their neck, so they don't have to sit there and hold it. They won't drop it on the floor. But I think the most important thing that we have to remember is, at the end of town meeting, we need to get them back. Because if not, we have to pay for them. So it's very important. I'm hoping that we have a mechanism that afterwards, because they are on lanyards, we're working on, that they can just hang them as they walk out of the room, and that prevents them from getting tangled, because we have to ship them back the next day. So we don't want to have to spend two hours untangling lanyards. So we're hoping to just have some sort of a device where they can just walk out and hang them. But it's pretty simple. It's not hard. I know, you know, a few people have asked, you know, I, I don't get this. What's it going to do? You can't take these home with you. It's not going to turn on your TV. It's not going to open your garage door, and it's not going to work with anything else except town meeting that night. So I'm, I'm hoping that people will come a little early. And if they have any questions, we still will have the tellers. They'll be able to answer questions if they have them. I'll be available to answer questions. But I think this is going to be, you know, a fun thing for people to try and get a sense of whether it's something going forward that they'd be interested in.
You did take one thing away from us, you know?
What's that?
You know how we all try to add up and be the first one to get the totals? Everybody's going, 12, 11, okay, 82, 83.
Try to figure out the two-thirds vote.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
No, it's instantaneous. It's, it's, it's just going to, you know, I think what the, the interesting part is, you're going to see what the vote, how it's going as it happens. So it's, it's very quick. And so I'm looking forward to it. I hope the voters are too. And hopefully, it will also speed up town meeting a little bit.
I think that's impossible.
Thank you.
Claire, where are we going to see the results? Is it going to be up on the screen?
Right on the screen. You know how we have the motions on the screen?
Right behind us.
So what happens is, you have the motion up on the screen, and that is going to be the same way that we do it. It's just the motion, so that people can talk about it. They can add their comments. They can ask questions. The minute I say we call for a vote, that changes, and it will have this bubble. It will have a yes bubble and a no bubble with the motion.
Okay.
And you'll see as the votes come in, how, how the vote is coming.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your work on that.
All right.
Thanks for all your work on it.
Announcements. Alan?
Okay, two things. Claire actually sent me something to read. First, we have Grumpy's 5K. With respect to Grumpy's, you have to register by October 10th in order to be guaranteed to receive a T-shirt. That's nice. We'll have some T-shirts available for those who do not meet the registration deadline. Can't guarantee sizes. First prize, we'll receive a blue beret house full of cranberries to honor Bob's legacy of, of nature. Second one, Ben Franklin. In addition to the presentation, we are raffling off a colonial dinner with Ben Franklin, and three lucky winners will be drawn after the presentation, sorry, on Friday evening. Those three winners each will bring a friend, so the total of six people will enjoy dinner with Ben Franklin on Saturday evening. Dinner will be served at the Marion Music Hall, Front Street, Marion Maslow, Saturday evening. Claire, the event is at the...
High school.
High school on Friday, correct?
Correct. There's actually two presentations. One is for the high school students.
Get close to the mic.
Rob DeBidas, who play, who portrays Ben Franklin, is actually from Philadelphia. He'll be arriving on Thursday. He will be doing a presentation at the high school with the high school students in the morning. And then we will be entertaining him. He and his wife have not come to Massachusetts, they've never been here. So we have some things in store for them. And then Friday night at 7:00 is the presentation at the high school. It's free. He's very interesting. He's very good. I don't know if any of you came and saw George Washington last year, but these two men are amazing. He will tell you things that you never knew about Ben Franklin. And he looks just like Ben Franklin. And then on Saturday, we're going to take him to Faneuil Hall. We're going to walk the Freedom Trail. And I'm sure that that will be another fun day for he and his wife. And then, like Alan said, we are raffling off a dinner with Ben Franklin on Saturday night for three lucky winners and two friends. I believe it's going to be a full-course colonial turkey dinner, because Ben wanted the turkey to be the national bird.
Speaking of this, did you think anything more about how you would like to do the presentation for when you go to...
England, no.
England.
That's on my agenda for after, the day after town meeting to work on. Actually, but just to let people know that Howie and I are actually going to Wareham, England, the end of March. I know it's town meeting time, and I know it's going to be a stretch for me to get everything done and ready. But we had to work around the mayor's schedule and town council's schedule over there. So we're probably going to leave somewhere around the 21st of March and stay until April 4th. So what I was thinking of, and actually, I'd like to ask this board if you have any ideas, I would like to send a box of something over from this community. So one of the things I thought of is maybe doing some sort of proclamation in a formal journal or a book, and then passing it around town, and letting townspeople sign it, to say that, you know, we're your sister town, and, you know, we as residents welcome the opportunity to be that. So if you have any ideas, please share them. And, you know, I'm, we're both excited about it. We're looking forward to it. And they're looking forward to having us, too. So if you can come up with anything, just let us know. And, but that was one thing I had mentioned that I thought might be nice is to do. You know, the people of Wareham are interested in becoming your sister city. And here's all our signatures. So we could pass it around to different groups or that kind of thing. But it was a thought. I just haven't gotten there yet.
All right, thank you. Alan?
Okay, also, on the holiday, while I was home praying, et cetera, for the Day of Atonement for everybody here as well. I'm glad...
That's somebody who's doing a lot.
Well, we're off to New Year, so I can go right at this again. Unfortunately, that morning, Michael Byrd passed away. And then at 10:30 Tuesday night, my friend... And then, at 10:30 Tuesday night, my friend Joe Leggett passed away. I'd asked for a moment of silence.
Oh.
We have a Cavemarian Wareham Regional Rettors Disposal District meeting tomorrow, 5 o'clock, Marion Town Hall, and things are moving forward there. I think most of you know that Marion's considering withdrawing from the district, because they already have curbside pickup as part of the municipal services, and if we need to go to a greater cost, they don't think it would be in their benefit to do so. Iself and Carver at this point are still intending to try to move forward and provide a service at a reasonable cost, so more to continue on that. Quick note, Land Trust is having a couple of things this week, 10:27. Tweedy and Bonds Property, a mindfulness walk, you might consider that, 1 to 2 p.m., and a trail day on 10:24, same property, Blackmore Pond Road, 2:30, Blackmore Pond Road. That's all, thank you.
All right. Peter?
Nothing, thanks.
Mary?
Yes, the Onset Bay Association, the Glen Cove Hotel and Watermelon Alligator Theater Company present whodunit at the Glen Cove Hotel, Murder on the Pennsylent Express. Saturday, November 2nd, 6:30 to 9:30 p.m., crudités and hors d'oeuvres will be served, cash bar, $35 per person or $60 per couple, onsetvillage@gmail.com for info, and I've also been told that this murder mystery no one solves, so. The other one is Wednesday, October 23rd, 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., the Kindness Rock Project Night. This is at 196 Onset Ave, this is with the Onset Bay Association. They would like you to RSVP, I'll give that information to the press here, make sure they have it, I'm pretty sure you do, and that's all I have.
All right, we're gonna move on to Gateway Motors, because...
We're gonna do board comments also?
Huh?
Board comments?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to do it after, okay? Let's get this out of the way, then we'll get back to it. All right, I'm gonna move to, because I just don't want him waiting here all year for this, especially since we're probably gonna have to continue the hearing, because he's not done with the planning board, as I understand it, is that correct?
That is correct. Last time we went through this, well, to give background, we were here in June, and my name's John Mello, by the way, sorry. We were here in June to apply for a Class II license for 379 Main Street, and we were granted that, we got Planning Board approval, and then...
You're moving it to the other building?
Right, we're just moving it to another. We had a tenant express interest in renting one of the property, buildings on the property that we were planning on using, that we applied to use. So it made sense financially for us, and we think it's gonna be a good tenant for the town, so we decided that it made sense to move over to another building on the property. So that's all.
Can I have a motion to open the hearing, please? Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Second.
Peter. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we open the public hearing. All right, so now, I understand you're gonna change from one property to the other.
Yes.
But the plan may change as you get through the planning board.
Okay.
So there's not a whole lot we can do with it at this point for you, because we gotta see what the changes are, obviously, right? In order to make sure, look, that doesn't mean that there's an issue, so please don't take me wrong. The one thing too is, is that you don't have any service on site, so you have to have a contract with somebody who's doing the service for the vehicles.
Okay.
Which I know you don't have either, so you need to get that as well.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions they want to ask right now, before we continue the hearing?
No, the property, obviously, the lower piece is being rented out to, I think it's Barton's or whatever it is over at Marion, they're storing boats there. There's another building that's being stored, some cars there, and I imagine there'll be some retail as well as the used car up on the top level. And I think you're still working on the microbrewery for the fish.
Yes, correct.
So it's just a matter of seeing what the layout is for the parking.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
It's just the formality, but I really don't like to sit and, you know, go ahead and approve something and then waiting for another committee.
Then it changes, and we gotta do it again.
Changes, whatever.
Yeah.
And I think we have a policy coming up about special events, which really goes back to the same idea. Anybody coming before us, it should all be locked in before we make our decision.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, just a quick question, as a matter of protocol, is this a continuance, so that these don't have to be done again for the next one?
You don't have to do those, we're just gonna continue it to another date.
Okay.
Shouldn't it continue?
Okay, and let's, let me go and look and see what we got here. I gotta look at my calendar here.
Plan Board meets in two weeks.
Can't do it next week.
No, I can't do it next week.
Probably will not meet on the Town Meeting night.
Yeah, 'cause they won't meet on Town Meeting, you know what? Let's move it up to...
To be the second...
It'll be the 19th.
In November.
Be the 19th of November, okay?
Okay.
So I'll put it on the 19th, and that'll give them time to finish up what they have to do, and we'll be able to move on, okay?
Just as a comment, if for some reason you're not ready for the Planning Board, give our office a call so we can reschedule it.
Okay, I think we already, I think we just had to push it back, because the engineer was not gonna be available last night.
Okay. All right, a motion to move the, to continue the hearing until the 19th of November.
So moved.
So moved, all right, by Jim, seconded by Alan. All right, all in favor say aye. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, roll call.
Yes.
Alan, Jim, Mary?
Yes.
Peter? Patrick, yes, all right, so that's it, we'll see you on the 19th.
Sounds good, thanks.
Do you want those green cards as a clerk?
Yeah, please.
Is that where you don't lose them, and we don't give you a hard time for not having your green card?
Yeah, 'cause if you lose them, we could, you know, you won't be happy.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. All right, so now, let's go back to board comments.
Do you want, oh, that's okay.
And then we're gonna get to you. Mr. Swenson. Oh, actually, do we have...
You wanna take care of the other one there for Mrs. Shifoni?
Yeah, you know what, can we do that? Let's do that.
I'll have the last.
All right, let's get Bob out of the way. What do we got?
Barnacle Bubs.
Barnacle Bubs. Why don't we do that real quick?
It's on a busy night.
That way, everybody will sort of be out of here, and that'll be good. All right, application by Barnacle Bubs, DBA Barnacle Bubs, and/or BB's 2424 Cranberry High for a change of hours. We see the change of hours on the application.
Yes, and good evening, members of the board, Tim Shifoni, Barnacle Bubs, doing business as BB's Bar and Grill. As you indicated, Mr. Selectman, I am here with regard to a request for a change of hours, and basically just tweaking it somewhat. We've experienced significant difficulty with staffing lately, particularly the lunch, so the request before the board tonight is to open later, but also to stay open later as well. And also, because we've been doing more and more functions, if there is a function that would fall outside of the hours that I'm currently asking for, then we would come back before the board for special or specific permission for that particular day, that particular function. Generally speaking, we're looking for Monday, 4 p.m. to 11:00, Tuesday, 4 to 11:00, Wednesday, 4 to 11:00, Thursday, also 4 to 11:00, Friday, 4 to 1 a.m., Saturday, 2 p.m. to 1 a.m., Sunday, 2 p.m. to 11 p.m. There's also several requests in there for holidays to be closed, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, and I believe that there's a request from December 25th through December 31st.
You know all on there?
I don't have the December 25th through...
Christmas.
I don't have that on there, but all the other days...
The closing dates are easy, we can handle that anyway.
I don't have the closing dates on here, I have everything else.
Are you sure you want to close Christmas Eve? I mean, New Year's Eve, sorry. New Year's is one of the biggest days for bars.
No, he's not closed New Year's Eve, it's 4 p.m. to 1 a.m.
I stand corrected, Mr. Selectman, it was to December 30th. Thank you for that.
But you did mention, you said New Year's Day.
I did, I did.
Because if he stays up until 1 o'clock at night, that's New Year's Day.
Right.
Yes, and that was correct, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, motion.
I move the...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, thank you so much.
Good luck.
All right, now let's get back to the board comments, Alan.
Okay, as I said, you know, we had a holiday of Day of Atonement, so I'm gonna be at it pretty hard for a while. I'm really tired of a lot of the stuff that we put out, that gets put out in public through newspapers, through blog sites, et cetera. It's getting to a point where the town is making a real strong effort to make things better. We're trying to rebrand the town, and every time we turn around, we have things come out with, you know, not only just negative attitude, but just incorrect, false information, et cetera. And I don't know about any of the other, you know, selectmen here, but I really get upset when I see people attack, you know, elected officials, which we always, we're subject to it anyways, 24/7, but we have other officials, we have town administrator, town council, department heads, employees. It's completely unnecessary and unproductive, because most of the stuff that's put out there is simply wrong. It doesn't have correct information, people throw stuff out there, because they like to have controversy, and it's getting to the point where this country, as it's being run today, is pretty bad, and the way everything is going is pretty bad, and then we have to sit here at our level and have to take a lot of it. And I'll give you an example. I got a call from our local newspaper, asked me about the bridges, and I says, why are you calling me about the bridges? Because that was a Buon thing. Said, well, you work with SERPED, you're in charge and stuff. I said, yes, but SERPED only goes as far as Wareham, that's the easternmost piece. We have nothing to do with the bridges going across the Buon. That's strictly the Town of Buon, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Cape Cod Commission, which takes care of roads on their side. So I explained it twice to make sure they understood that, but I'm not sure that registered. We have an article that comes out on the Wareham Week, states that I said that if the bridges, you know, basically the bridge, Mrs. Slavin says that the bridges would probably cause a problem for Wareham, you know, with traffic. What I did say was, when they asked me, what do you think overall? I said, if they're able to actually replace the bridges and take care of the traffic and all the bottlenecks on both sides, we will end up most likely losing business, because traffic will not come through Wareham, they'll go right to the highways, because it'll be easier to get over to the Cape, which is a real problem. And of course, it was, what happens is, they make a quote, they don't give you the first piece of the puzzle of what they're asking for, they give you an answer, and it's like it's like having like the National Enquirer throw stuff out, just to sell newspapers, et cetera. And it really bothers me, because this has been going on for a long time. And my other quote was that I didn't think in my lifetime I'd see the bridges ever built, because I know how the municipalities work, I know how the government works, and I'm 75, and within 10 years, I'm not sure I'm not gonna be here, or I won't be here in this position anyways. So my comment was, in my lifetime, I'm not gonna see the bridges done. And we have people then turn around and go to the blog site, which I don't believe Wareham Week needs to be an actual viable business, and allow the blog site for someone to basically make a comment, you know, and saying that we should stay out of it. My answer initially was, we are staying out of it, because we have nothing to do with it. And we have to sit there, and people throw it out there and listen to it. We have people that continue to say that the selectmen messed up on the marijuana in the retail stores, et cetera. We didn't mess up. If you want to know who messed up, the state changed the rules, but at the end of the day, if everybody looks in the mirror who went to Town Hall when the zoning audits came through, and I'm not gonna blame the planning board, they put the zoning in place, the individual people's, a Town Meeting made that decision. And I'm just getting tired of this keep coming back and coming back. We worked very hard, you know, I'm not gonna get into reimbursement or anything else, there's things saying that, you know, we're making money out of the marijuana, or other people getting funds out of marijuana. It's just not the case. I'm just tired of sitting there and having to listen to it. I just don't believe we should have to do that. We do the best we can for this town, we're trying to grow the town, we're trying to increase the tax base, so the citizens aren't constantly banged away at the increase in taxes, and you're not doing us any favors at all. And I'm just tired of it, and I'm not gonna sit back and take it anymore.
Well, the thing that bothers me is always when they, when they have articles in there and they let people write stuff at the end. You know how they can comment?
Yeah, that's my problem.
And most of the comments are so off-base, it's unbelievable, they don't even know what they're saying.
Yeah, it's the same three basement dwellers, I wouldn't worry too much about it.
Well, yeah, might be, but I mean, that is crazy.
It's not that.
They allow those comments in there from people who have no clue, and they just, they go off on a tangent about nothing to do with nothing, but whatever.
It's not, it's not that, it's just the idea that...
I usually don't, so just so you know, I don't usually read them at all.
The problem is, the newspaper itself knows what's going on, it can ask us the questions, and they can correct their own blog site, which they don't do. So they're promoting negativity. And for me, I don't know why they exist then.
All right, Jim, you're up.
I'm just...
Tough act to call.
No, no, you know...
Why do I go with that one?
Well, no, you know...
Well...
People, whether we like what they say or not, they have a right to express themselves, and I like, my colleague here just said, you know, I don't really read most of them, and most of them are from the same people, so you, you know, you look at it, you scan them, maybe you chuckle.
I don't read them usually at all, so...
But, you know, it's just that I hate... It's just, it's just something that happens, and I do not take it to heart personally, what a lot of people say, you know, I don't take it personal. So, that's all I need to say. I'm just gonna let, I'm just gonna move it on to Mary here.
Mary, do you have anything you want to say in board comments?
I have nothing to say, no.
No, okay, Peter?
Not a word.
All right, well, that's good, that'll move us on a little quicker here. All right, next up, let's see, Gateway Motors, we took care of that, we took care of that, next page, discussion and vote, whether to recommend or not to recommend Fall Town Meeting. Do you have anything yet on any of the stuff that you want to talk about?
No, the balance sheets were submitted to the Department of Revenue officially today for free cash. It's such a tight timeframe, I don't know if...
I hope we get it the night of Town Meeting.
Yeah, that's, I would love to see it a couple days earlier, but, you know, it's already Tuesday night, well, they'll have Wednesday and Thursday to ask you a few questions. To get it before Monday would be, you know, that's a bit of a gamble.
What's the worst that can happen? We have to push it off till spring?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, it's sort of the point where...
Is there anything that's, you know, crucial?
No, I mean, I can, I tell you, all the departments will tell me they're crucial, but I think one will manage.
Thank you.
All right, all right, then we're gonna move on to ratification of contracts that Then we're gonna move on to ratification of contracts that we just voted on in executive session. We also have one other one, right? Don't we have the, one other contract that we need to add in here?
Yeah, but you don't have it on there.
You don't have it, so you're gonna have to...
You don't have it on the agenda.
Have to do it another time. Okay. All right. So we have, I got the contracts for, let's see, the Wareham Clerical Union, the wastewater treatment facility, municipal maintenance, and the two steelworker unions. Okay?
Move to approve those five, which we already approved in open session. This is a confirmatory vote.
Okay.
Four.
Five.
Five. Cause there's two steelworkers.
Five, there's two steelworkers.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Jim. Is there any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay. So they're approved. All right. Next up, special event policy.
We want to do Richard, just we can get out of here.
No, he said he'd wait, so I'm gonna let him wait. He volunteered to wait, so we'll, we'll move on.
Is he entertained by this?
I'll get a few of these things out of the way. And that way, it'll just be you and us, and we'll be happy.
Let someone do it.
All right. So, special event policy. If you look at the special event policy that was sent to you today, the reason why I put this on and to make this change is because one of the things that goes on is, they come in to get their special, this is the way, it never was like this, but somehow it got changed. But they come in to get the special events package, and then they go out and they go to see the chief and municipal maintenance and whoever. And in the meantime, the women in the office send out emails to each of the departments, ask them if they approved them. Well, obviously, they haven't because, you know, they just sent them out, right? So, and then they have to keep following up and keep chasing them and keep doing whatever. And then what happens is, eventually, they get information back, but it doesn't get to us on the sheet like it always did. We used to have one sheet, and it would say police chief and say what they, what they wanted. And then next to that, it would be municipal maintenance and would say what they wanted. So if somebody in here asks a question like they did last week, how many police officers or how many this or whatever, the answers are right there on the sheet. So I changed the policy to allow for the sheet to go to the, to the group. They take the sheet, they go see the police chief, he writes it on there like he always used to, years ago. I don't know how it got changed. They would write it on there, okay, two police officers, so much time, whatever, right? Cause they gotta go see them anyway. Then they go see municipal maintenance, he writes it on there what they have to do. The sheet comes back, they hand it in at the office, yay, what do you know, everything's here. Yep, you checked off all the boxes. Great. They put it on the agenda, it comes to us. It's in the folder. Everything that they have to do is in the folder, no questions asked. And we didn't have to keep sending annoying messages to people that are extremely busy to check to see if they're, if it's ready yet, or if it's, you know, they finished it, or whatever. Because of course, you get the people calling after, well, is it all set yet? Is it gonna be on? Is it whatever? This way, it eliminates all of that. Okay? And that's why I changed the policy, and I hope you guys will go along with it.
Motion to approve.
There you go. Motion made by, made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Discussion.
I just have one question. We're gonna have to look at the application packet and make sure that that mirrors what the policy is going forward, so the motion needs to be to amend the application as well.
Yes, yes, the application's gonna be fixed so that it has all the spaces.
They can't be inconsistent, because you can't hand it out to people, and then...
I agree.
They think, wait a minute, the offices is gonna go around and get my approvals, and then yell...
I totally agree.
Oh, it did before.
I totally agree. But yes, it's in here. I think we have it in there, the application, right? Do we not? Has she put it in the folder?
Yes, yep.
And doesn't it have the department things in there for them to fill out?
Let me see.
If you go to the application.
Well, this just has, oh yeah, municipal maintenance...
Yes.
...urban master, border health...
See, they're all there. They all go with the packet. So each one of the fill-outs are in the packet. So it's very simple for them to take them and get them done. They're gonna talk to them anyway.
Yeah. For some reason, I don't know why, that all of a sudden, out of the blue, they changed it, and the people had to go around and have them signed and then come back and...
You know, it was being, and then we don't get all the information, and there's a lot of difficulty. So anyways, I have a motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I, there's, I do, in the sense that, as I spoke earlier, there's a couple other other...
Policies.
Policies that we really, before we do this, we should work on, take a look at them. Use of town property, done in 2002, I think, and extraordinary services fee, done again in 2002, which is kind of summed up in the new policy, if not against it. There was some minor, minor changes that I thought would help in cleaning it up, you know, it's like the fifth line down in the, you know, town reserves the right to require fees paid in full time in the application. Then another part, it, there's a retainer fee will not be collected, however, if the town is required to clean up after your event, you will be billed. And then the retainer fee is down in the municipal maintenance application. So I'm a little confused on that. I don't...
Yeah, we've had, yeah, that, we didn't notice that discrepancy about three years ago, I think of...
So, I think that should be cleaned up.
I think, didn't we...
Just before, you know, and then, and then just bring it back. I'm not against it, you know, just cleaned up. Let's look at the other two policies. Can we eliminate them to get them off the policies page? So again, when someone's looking at, at something, all they see is this one, they click on it, and it tells them what they need to do. And it makes, like you said, it makes them the responsible party to get the signatures and not our administrative assistance.
Go ahead, Alan.
I think, Jim, there's a newer policy too on using town property, because I remember we redid that maybe within the last six or seven years.
I think you did it when you were chair.
Yeah. So there's another one in there too buried.
So it'd just be nice to look at them and, and, you know, again, just make it clear, and if we don't need those...
Let's put it on the agenda for, you know, right after town meeting. And just list the policies, Jim can pull the numbers, because he and I are supposed to be working on 8810 as well.
After town meeting. I've read it twice.
After town meeting, Jim.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's, I'm not against it.
Well, I'm gonna implement the change anyway, just so you know, okay? I just want everybody to know. I'm gonna implement the change so that it goes that way. It won't have a policy directed to it, but at some point, then we'll have to clean up the policy, okay?
Yeah, because we want to clean up the, I don't, we don't want to have to sit there and go through and say, well, you didn't get all these signatures you need, you didn't get the okays, or you did get them, but they don't explain what it is.
Exactly.
So let's just fix it for now as best we can and then get it done all together.
That's fine. Okay? So we'll, we'll do it that way, if that's fine. If that's what you want to do, that's fine. And then you can, and then you come back when you guys get it ready, however you're gonna do it. You two are gonna look at it like you look at the other one? Put them together however you want, and then we'll make it a policy. But as far as, as far as going forward, I'm gonna make sure that this is the way it happens for the time being, okay?
Yep.
All right? Is everybody okay with that?
I mean, that's basically what the, yeah, at least it's, it's something in place, you know?
Yeah. It'll be an office thing right now.
Right.
It'll become a policy.
Right.
Okay?
Cause I'd really like to clean up the policy.
Does that sound okay?
Well, let's change the motion.
Huh? Yeah, you can change the motion.
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. So, and Jim, you reached, you, who seconded it? You did?
Yeah.
So she withdrew her second.
I'll just make a motion that we just changed the process for now.
For now. Okay. Motion made by Alan, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay.
So that's the direction to the office.
That's the direction to the office.
Okay.
All right. So we're gonna do it, and then when you guys get that, that together with the other one, you can bring it back, all cleaned up, pretty like, whatever. Alan's good at that. He went through all the policies before. I don't know how we missed that one.
Take a while on the other one. Okay, next.
All right. Next up, town business, let's see, what do we got? Couple of things quick. Discussion and vote on the town of Lakeville's animal shelter thing? Can you do that? That's just a motion to, to agree to the terms of the thing. I've already talked to them and it's...
Yeah, it's the same deal.
The same deal, there's nothing...
That's where we take our dogs.
Nothing we can do about it, it's where our dogs go, and we really don't have much choice, so can I just have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion approved by Alan, seconded by...
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Appointment of the town administrator as custodian of the November 14, 2019 auction. This is just ratification of what we already did. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
I just have a couple of quick questions for, through you to a town administrator.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna have some reserve, minimum reserve for, for the bid amounts on these policies? So I mean, you know...
We usually set something up for each one depending on the value and condition of the property. We work with the...
So we will have it.
Yeah. We had, we've had it all the last ones.
Yeah. Do we, do we get, like, do we get to know that or no? Is it, because we can't bid on them anyhow, correct?
No.
We're starting the bidding at $1 million.
We can't, he can't.
One.
$1 million.
We'll take it.
Okay, well, yeah, all right then. If, if we can bid on them, then we shouldn't really have a...
That's why we make him the custodian, so we can bid on them.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, I think it's important to have a reserve, a minimal reserve, that's all.
I think we can bid on them.
Huh?
I don't think we can bid on them.
Um, I don't know, through, through you then, to the council, can we do that? Do we have a minimal reserve on, on a bid? So if it, if we don't get, I think we can.
Well, we can't set it because we wouldn't know what to set it at.
No. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, yes. I think the standard practice is that we do set a reserve on all these properties. Nobody's gonna steal something out from under the towns' nose. Everything's got a minimum number, and if we don't hit it, we'll try again another time.
We don't just keep dropping?
Well, it would depend, but I would say no.
Okay, just, that's all.
Just like when you go fishing every day, some days you don't catch one.
Like, no, fishing.
They'll, they'll tell you, Jim, too, as part of it, when they give the speech in the beginning, if, as a custodian of the auction, I still have the ability to, on the final number, say no. If I don't feel that it's, yeah. We usually do set a reserve, and if the bidding goes where it hasn't met our, the reserve we've had for the property, and say no. We haven't had that so far, though.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. All right. Now, there's two 61A conversions coming out from Makepeace, coming out of, out of 61A. One on Charlotte Furnace Map, 106 lot, L2 map, 105 lot 16 and lot 17. The other one is 106 lot, L2 map, 105 and lot 110. How you doing?
Good evening. Richard Cirque here for the AD Makepeace Company.
How you doing, Richard?
Nice to meet you.
So...
Nice to see you again. It's been a while.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Derek, we're all set with this, right?
Yep. Okay, everything's good? All right.
Has all the different boards set their...
I believe, except for, I believe there's one that I didn't get information back from yet.
We hope for 30 days.
And it was, yeah, it's been a...
It doesn't matter.
From, it was from, you know who?
Oh.
Did you ask her?
No, she, her response was, they would not have a meeting with them.
They didn't have a meeting within the timeframe.
So that's the actual response.
That was the response, so...
That's an effective yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Can I have a motion, please?
It's all made.
All right. Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
We can't do lights so your billing hours go up.
Yeah. So I think...
More than happy.
Rich, are you looking to get the signed copies tonight?
I don't necessarily have to have them tonight. If you'd prefer to wait until later, you can just put them in the mail to me.
What's that?
Okay.
That sounds good.
And I'm sure you've got a convenient notary and attorney Bowen.
Can?
No.
I haven't noticed to date things.
Okay, well, I'm a notary.
Patty in my office is a notary. And so is Janet.
In our office, we have notaries too. So we have plenty of notaries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We use Rich for, for the lofty.
All right. Any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours?
Out to me.
Now, just so you know, we do have one thing.
Richard.
We have one thing for sure, and that's the, for the signing of the contract, for the agreement between Makepeace and ourselves. You and I have to sign it. But I just want the board to, to sign on to approving the signatures.
Yeah. Well...
All right. So that, that agreement, that holding, the tolling agreement is all set and ready to be signed by myself and Rich, and I just want everybody to know that it's signed and the dates are in it for the meetings, and we're gonna start that immediately.
And they've already signed it.
And, and you've already signed it. I just need to...
What was the expiration date again?
So could I, I have a motion to, so that allow me and Rich to sign the tolling agreement, please?
Uh, so moved.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we just get copies of the dates?
Can you get copies of the dates? Absolutely. We'll get them to you. We'll get you a copy of the tolling agreement, okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Okay, done. Alright, now, Mr. Swenson.
Gonna need to kill a light.
One side, one side of the lights, please. And you're on. Sorry about this, dude. It was just a busy night tonight.
That's okay.
Was a lot to do.
I'm gonna try to go very quick for you.
That would be appreciated.
I'm sure.
I mean, it's still not bad. I mean, we'll be, you know, time-wise.
No, it's not terrible.
You guys have had a long day.
Richard's got it.
So, why this is doing this to me here?
Derek can help you.
Richard, I have full faith in you that you can execute this PowerPoint.
What are you looking for?
I'm back next week.
Ran home and did this on a PowerPoint really quick, Mary, after you called.
So, wait, wait. Okay, there you go.
Those are too skinny. Be me.
We have a handouts. For everyone.
You want this stuff? Yeah, the faceless people. You gotta get rid of the rest of the signatures on these.
Um, I'm Richard Swenson. I am a member of the Wareham Redevelopment Association and an associate member of the Planning Board. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Wareham Congress proposal. I am currently, uh, sharing this with different, uh, agencies in town and trying to get feedback, and tonight's your lucky night. So, the agenda tonight is to define what the word "Congress" means and what, how it applies to a Wareham Congress, why we should have one, how it integrates with the Master Plan, what a Wareham Congress meeting agenda would look like, what I consider the keys to success and next steps going, going forward. So, first of all, there's been some confusion on the social media and whatnot, and I'm not, I'm not in, uh, locked into this word "Congress", but, uh, the Congress is, one of several definitions is a formal meeting or assembly of representatives for the discussion, arrangement, or promotion of a matter of common interest. And for me, that's exactly what I'm trying to do here. So, a Wareham Congress would be a forum for all Wareham agencies, and I use the word "agencies" here, to describe a board, an authority, a committee, a commission, whatever there may be. It would be chaired by the Planning Board under my proposal. There would be representation from all the Wareham agencies. I'm proposing initially a quarterly meeting, and that might be monthly, it might be bimonthly, it could be anything, but it would be a public meeting under open-meeting law guidance. And the mission of this agency, and this is the key part, is, um, agency alignment to the Master Plan. And Master Plan strategy, and the, the word "strategy" is used throughout the Master Plan. It's really a task that's called out by the Master Plan, to look at those strategies or tasks and prioritize them, assign them, and implement them. We've, you'll, you will see the word "Master Plan" in this presentation over and over and over again. There, uh, in my mind, the Wareham Congress is married to the Master Plan. The Master Plan is basically the agenda for the Congress. It's a way that the Master Plan can be a useful tool. It can be implemented. It can be managed. It can be updated. It can be changed, and I'll get into that. We should consider it because it would allow our town to ensure, one, that it's alignment. I've been to a lot of meetings of different agencies, and, um, I could tell you stories. I'm sure you all have your own stories about our agencies aren't aligned. They're going in different directions, and we have a lot of them. You'll see that in a minute. We have Master Plans that have sat for a long, long time and collected dust. I've heard that words from many people. But this would provide a forum for Master Plan oversight and execution. And it would provide a, a mechanism for town agencies that have common goals and common missions to work together on common goals. Now, how does this Congress and how does this Master Plan integrate together? I consider it a way to start a roadmap for all of our town agencies, and here they are. I prob, I think I've still left some out. But what do we got? We've got seven, 14, eight more, it's 22, plus six, it's 28. 28 agencies listed there. I have the Board of Selectmen, the Redevelopment Authority, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Finance Committee, and Conservation Commission listed on the inside. I think they're a little more critical to Master Plan execution, and I'm doing presentations like this to those boards individually. I'll talk to that. Um, but this tells me a, this tells me a lot, looking at this. There's lots of agendas, lots of missions, lots of goals, and I don't think they're all necessarily aligned, and I don't think we use economies of scale properly to get the things we've done, we need to get done. Um, Congress meeting agenda, what would it look like? We would review alignment to the Master Plan. We would look at the 52 different strategies that are listed in the current unapproved Master Plan and prioritize them. We would look at those strategies and assign ownership, and there's 52 of them. And if I could get three of them agreed upon, prioritized, and assigned, I think we'd be well on our way to accomplishing something. It doesn't take many, there's, there are tasks in our Master Plan draft right now that I know every agency that I showed you before would raise their hand and say, "Yes, that's a top priority," that I don't think we're working on hard enough. So, this is a way that we can assign ownership, start implementing, monitor its status, and finally, use it as a vehicle to maintain the Master Plan. Some people think the Master Plan is a once-every-10-year document. I think it's a living, breathing, dynamic document that should be changed as necessary without any hesitation, but that's my opinion. Keys to success. One, we have to have an approved Master Plan. We have to have a commitment to execution by all the agencies involved, specifically the six I highlighted before as the key ones. We need to have performance metrics or KPIs assigned for the strategies we are gonna execute. We need to have Congress members attending from the different agencies who are empowered to speak for that agency and, and be accountable. And finally, we need to have full transparency. Next steps. Solicit feedback on this proposal from all town agencies, and this is what I'm doing tonight. I have gone to the Planning Board with this on two occasions, and they are, they are on board with pushing it out to other agencies, which I'm doing now. I've been to the Conservation Commission. This, this is my, uh, third time. Uh, be going to the Finance Committee and the ZBA after-town meeting. I will probably have, I will have a public workshop for Wareham citizens. I will, and may or may not include all the other boards at that time, or have another larger audience, um, for the other agencies. I can't go to every agency independently. Um, and then implement. And concurrently to do this, I'm working hard with the, um, Planning Board right now on reviewing the 2018 final draft of the Master Plan and getting them on board for ownership. I know you all are reviewing the Master Plan as well and, and gonna be having comments and feedback as, that can be implemented. That's what I have. Um, I have handouts for this. Um, I'd like to leave you all a copy of that. Um, I would like you all to give me feedback on this. I would rather that you did it as a group and give me a set of feedback that you all agree with as opposed to individual, but if you choose to do individual, that's fine as well. I don't know what's gonna happen here. This is my, this is my, um, this is me tilting at windmills, if you will. Um, I'm, I might crash and burn. I don't know.
(laughing)
But, right now I'm moving...
We've all done that.
But, right now I'm moving forward with it. I, I think there's value here. Um, I know that I'm committed to doing it, and I know I'm committing to make it happen if I can get, uh, people like yourselves behind me and supporting me. So, any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to have the paperwork that you have to review and stuff, if you don't mind.
Get it on another agenda. We can discuss it.
And then we'll, then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for discussion.
I will send you, um...
Not until after-town meeting, obviously, so...
I will send you the, leave the small version. I'll send you the full-size one.
Okay.
And you can distribute it.
Alright. Thank you.
Cause you're, cause you're cowardly.
(laughing) I was thinking the same thing.
Yep.
We'll get it on a, a discussion agenda at some, some point, okay? And I'll let you know.
If you'd like me to meet here, that'd be more than happy.
Well, it'll probably be for us to discuss, but, uh, uh, we'll see, okay? Alright, thank you.
I appreciate your time very much.
We'll see how it goes, okay?
Thanks.
But we'll, we'll get it on sometime. Quick, alright? Thank you.
Thanks for your effort so far.
Thank you. You're working hard.
Question there, Mr. Swenson?
Quite a presentation. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Swenson, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Have you, have you gotten the, uh, Planning Board to endorse the plan yet?
The Master Plan?
No, we're still, our next meeting...
You're still working on that?
It's November 4th, and I think we'll be done then.
Okay. Well, there was a bunch of changes that we sent that we thought we, I know Alan had some, you had some.
Some?
I had some. We all had some changes that we sent over there, so...
I know kidding. It was only like 54. Come on now.
I give you a lot of credit for, uh, I give you a lot of credit for, uh, taking this task on.
I knew it was 50-something.
I give you a lot of credit for taking this on. You know, hey...
Next, Ed. We'll see what happens.
No, good, good.
Yeah, Richard's a rock star.
Alright, next up, Town Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, today, and Mr. Swenson was there as well. I was able to attend the public hearing for House Bill 4070, which was the, the act, um, that Representative Gifford had put forward. I did testify on it, and I testified in favor of the bill because I think this community deserves the opportunity to vote on that if it is to come forward.
Okay.
So, um, it was good, and I believe the, uh, there was positive testimony. There was, uh, Senator Pacico did, uh, did testify against it. I was not there for that time, though. And it's, it's, um, kind of brought up something that we've been, we've been talking about, and you hit on it too, Patrick, when you were talking about, uh, or I think, or someone about how, in a way, loss of traffic is loss of revenue for some of our businesses.
Alan.
Alan, excuse me. And, um, you know, when, when the final couple miles of Route 25 came in, it rerouted traffic around Wareham, which was good. It's traffic relief, but we see what's happened with Cranberry Highway, and there's been a lost revenue. Um, there is an opportunity to put forward into the bond bill, or the CIP, the Route 25 interchange that's been, uh, been proposed. And I think I would love to see this Board of Selectmen put in a letter specifically requesting that Route 25 interchange because that area that they're talking about for, um, for the potential casino, things like that, if that's not working out, that would be an amazing location for industrial park and businesses for this community. So, when you get on the, the CIP or the bond bill, if you will, that can be, that can be years, take years. So, I think it's incumbent on us to, you know, grab, grab the bull by the horns, if you will, and request that that be put on the bond bill.
Alan?
Just for basic information, even though the CIP has, you know, been voted on, it's never permanently locked in, so this is something that can be put on there. All this does really is, by us going ahead, is saying, "Okay, if this project can happen, you know, this particular interchange may or may not be able to be financed" because if there's no money in place, it really is, it basically becomes a moot point altogether. And I think it's something that was, if I remember right, Patrick, this was approved a long time ago for that off-ramp in that area, and then it was pulled. Um, so, you know, it's not an easy thing to do because from a political standpoint, we have people far the casino, not for the casino, people against the hush track, whatever. Uh, what's really important is that what's happening, and I really appreciate Richard going up because I already got feedback that they were very impressed with his presentation and with Derek's, and I thank both of you. Uh, the bottom line here is that if they go ahead and change the, the status of this Class 1 license to a modified version, all this does is it opens it up for the whole Southeast region. I'll also make the comment that I wrote a letter as a chair or the Serpents Commission in favor of them at least looking at this, because what it does is it opens up the possibility for all 27 communities. It doesn't make Wareham a lock or anything else. The change in the ruling would simply go ahead and allow any other community to go ahead and have a proposal for the same type of thing. And that's really as my, as my position with Serpents. That's my job, is to open up something for the region, not for Wareham per se. And I want people to understand that what we're doing here is opening up for the region because it will benefit everybody if something like this goes anywhere. Obviously, it'd be nice to be in Wareham, you know, because it's a $5 million increase on our tax base as far as income coming in, and it would take care of a lot of things, but there are a lot of people far and against it. So, the bottom line is this is strictly an opportunity to have something in Southeast Mass. There is no way right now for a Class 1 casino to be financially stable and survive. And this is a, this is an opportunity to put something in Southeast Mass. Southeast Mass, very much like the Berkshires, are always ignored. We get the end of the stick always, and it's very discouraging when our state senator who represents us makes a comment that he doesn't think Wareham should have this because it's, this particular thing is geared to Wareham only. And it was very discouraging to hear that today.
Well, you know how I feel about that gentleman.
Yes, my...
And gentlemen, so I, I won't make my, make myself too public, but, and he knows how I feel about him as well.
We should, uh, we should reach out to him and, and, you know, present, make a presentation on why it would be beneficial to, to consider putting it here, and, um...
Well, you're not gonna change his mind.
But he's had his plans for a long while.
Taunton is Taunton. That's all he cares about.
But, but you know what? I, I think we as a board should reach out and say, "Look, we deserve this opportunity. Put it in writing to him, you know, the reasons why, rationale, and why it would be a good thing." And, um, you know, what's the worst it could do? I mean, like you said, he represents us also, and we're a voting block. Maybe not as large as some of the other areas he's, like, he's representing, but, um, we should be given due consideration, and we should let him know that's how we feel. I mean, that, that...
Yeah, I will, we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll talk about it.
I think that's a good idea.
I won't make a comment because I already had this, had discussion with the senator before when this came up, and I'm not gonna put it in public right now.
I saw that letter that he sent us...
It would be embarrassing for everybody.
That he wanted to put on, that he wanted me to read in, into the public record. Uh, when they came here for that thing, I saw that, that letter, and frankly, I was horrified by it. It's so selfish, uh, you know, that he, he cares. Only thing about Taunton and the rest of us can go hang from a tree somewhere, but whatever.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, well, we digressed a little there. Um, I'd like to see if we could get support for, um...
You wanna put it together? We'll put it on the agenda. We'll give a vote.
25 interchange. Well, times of the essence, would, would it be okay if I worked with, uh, one of the members to, to put that forward while we, while we wait for an affirmative vote?
I don't see why not. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
I think it's...
No.
Gotta work with, uh, Selectman Slavin on this because we'll send it up to Secretary Pollock and get it going.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And you know, and frankly, I don't think, I mean, that's, you know, you're doing, your job is, is to promote and care and take care of the town, and I don't really think you really need our permission to ask that kind of question, but if you need it, you got it.
Well, thank you.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you. No, that's, uh, I, I, you know, if you weren't doing those kinds of things, I'd be a little upset.
Alright.
Alright, next up, Liaison Reports, please. Um, Jim.
Oh, no.
Well, hopefully you haven't been there in a few weeks either.
Oh, no.
Even the, even the media's leaving.
Even the media wants to get out. She says, "I'm outta here."
You guys shut the lights off on your way out.
Yes. Leave us in the dark, please.
Okay, um, we've been going back and forth on Merchant's Way with the control gate, you know, for the railroad, you know, for, in order for, uh, the redevelopment authorities to redevelop basically that back area, which, uh, Peter might say something today. They were, the redevelopment authority was officially certified by, uh, the state today as being...
Yeah, for the second time, as we discovered, but that's okay.
That's okay. Two is better than none.
We'll do, we'll make it an annual event, apparently.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, that's a real positive piece because it allows that particular group of people to go ahead and actually do things in Wareham. They don't have to be a 501(c)(3). They can just go ahead and do things. A lot of people don't realize what a redevelopment authority actually is when it's set up that way. So, I've been frustrated for about three years now trying to get, uh, just the simple thing of allowing us to have what we have is two control gate crossings on the back of Merchant's Way so we can develop a boardwalk possibly and change the whole dynamics, and maybe get enough money to somehow take Main Street on one side and turn it to the waterways and take advantage of what we have there. Um, I've gone around to everybody at Mass DOT from right under Secretary Pollock all the way back down to Jim Eng, back and forth three times now. It got so frustrating, I finally went and called Susan Gifford up, and I said, "Susan, I, I'm just tired. Can you make a phone call and see if you can move it? Because I have a good contact there, and, and I haven't got an answer in like four weeks." So, Susan made a, a call, and obvious, what happened is I've had three phone calls and two emails in a day and a half. And basically, we're gonna be meeting sometime next week to discuss actually getting a gate crossing approved, uh, which I haven't, I've got the things here, but I've never had, uh, that kind of response at all. So, just let everybody know that it looks like we're gonna finally, after all this, after three years, getting the simple thing done. Uh, on Friday, Ken Buckland met with, uh, Mass DOT, uh, down on the, uh, bike path, also the potential of a rotary at the end of Minot Ave, Depot Street, and Great Nick. And we also talked about a few other things. The other piece that was talked about was Route 6 and Swiss Beach, uh, traffic light potential, which we had put off. Well, it's back on the table again, so we'll see what happens. Mass DOT is going to do another traffic study. If the numbers come out okay, they're gonna push ahead on their own to see if they can get this done, which means that we don't have to wait probably for four or five years for the Route 6 modification of going from a potential four-lane to a three-lane with a turn highway. So, I know there's people who've been asking this for a long time. I think this would be the fourth time that we sit, tried to do something, and we've been basically stymied. So, that's another thing that's come through, which was pretty good as well. The bike path is $5 million. It's a ridiculous amount of money, but that's what it costs to build anything today. The rotary turns out, um, is, when the state came down, they decided because of the railroad crossing, et cetera, it would cost about $2 million to actually do the rotary. Um, and I got a call from Serpents earlier today because I thought the original project included the rotary. They recommended putting a rotary in. It turns out that, uh, if we had known that, there was actually over $2 million available in the, what they call a TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Program for 2020. We actually could've got this done. But what's happening is Mr. Buckland and Mr. Manad are going to go ahead and file with the state the required forms with Mass DOT to put this, move this particular piece separate on its own. Uh, there's money available probably over the next three years that we maybe will slide this in because the bike path is not scheduled to be, uh, done till 2024. So, that's another piece that's come in. Um, FCC, as we already know, um, we have an issue as far as Verizon because we're getting reimbursed at 5% and they will affect, uh, WCTV because the other contract is 4.5. The 5% we're getting means that if they decide that certain things that get added to the actual 5% they're giving us, that's gonna get cut back against us as well and the station. Community Events Committee, uh, basically approved, uh, Don't Trash Wareham's bill for this coming, this past year, and the Cape Verdean, uh, also, and that was to pay. We haven't cut the check because that's the accounting. We did send a check out to, uh, the, uh, the Chamber, uh, and that wasn't really, we approved it a while ago because the county was trying to get the books and everything else closed. They hadn't cut to it yet. It was cut and sent. So, we don't have to listen to that anymore. MMA, uh, we had our annual meeting as far as policies. And I think I mentioned before, Chapter 90, uh, increased funding, Chapter 70 school program, and zoning articles as far as housing, et cetera. I gave Derek the information. This is, the governor talked about a $1.5 billion school package reform. And I gave Derek all the numbers, and if he wants, he can explain it better than I, I can right now. But it sounds great on paper. At the end of the day, it puts a tremendous burden back on the town financially, the way it works out. Do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, unfortunately, all the increases aren't state aid. It's a miniscule portion of it. And it's just saying the town has to provide more money to the schools. As we're already doing, um, a greater percentage, it means it doesn't actually generate any more money to the school since we're already above the minimum net school spending. It'll just raise that minimum net school spending number, and it doesn't actually guarantee more money. So, I think the increase in the first year was supposed to be about $600,000, of which the state would give $55,000. And they wanted the town to come up with the rest, which doesn't...
My comment would, my comment would simply be that write your senator, write your local House of Representatives for the state expressing your concern about this particular bill because it's not gonna help us at all. It's gonna put us in just the opposite direction. And that's good enough for today.
Alright. James? Alright. Peter?
Uh, continue to make progress out at Littleton Drive. Uh, Selectman and WRA member Bruce and Clerk Buckland of the WRA and I were out there today, once again, with people from Mass Housing. Uh, the housing sort of, uh, former architect, but she, she's, she works as a sort of a housing development specialist with Mass Housing, uh, was out there today, along with, uh, the consultant that they use, uh, who's going to work on drawing up the request for proposals, uh, to solicit proposals from developers for the WRA to review, uh, and, and begin sort of the site selection process. You know, we wanna get some input. We wanna see what the developers have to say and then go from there. But, uh, we're starting to make some, you know, get some, get some things going here. Mass Housing is very interested. Uh, this was the first time the housing specialist had seen the property, and she seemed quite enthused, so that was a good thing.
Mary?
Mary's done.
Mary's done. Mary's done. She's a crispy critic.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I went to the groundbreaking at the hospital last, it was last week, right? And it was interesting. They are ready to go, and they're, they're gonna start going ahead. We, I got to stick the shovel in the ground and throw some sand in the air and the whole thing. It was kind of interesting. But they're, it's nice that they're gonna put a lot of money back into their community up there, and they should have a state-of-the-art emergency room when they're through, which is really nice to have. I mean, you know, a lot of towns don't have their own hospital, that's for sure, but we certainly have ours. And I thought the, the thing that interested me the most about it was, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but, you know, they have people come in a lot of the times that are, you know, come in. Look, nobody goes there because they're happy to go. They go there because they have an issue, right? All right, so a lot of times, some people will come in, and they're a little loud or a little, you know, agitated, or they came in with the police because there was an issue or whatever. Well, they're actually gonna have sort of a special, special place in there for them so that the rest of the people don't have to be on, on pins and needles while all the screaming and yelling is going on. So I thought that was really nice because I've been in there when that was going on, and, you know, it's not a fun thing, especially since you're there because you don't want to be there, you know, to begin with, but anyway. So it should be a nice facility when I think it's all done. It looks to be great, and hopefully it'll be, be a good addition to the community. All right, next up, what do we got? Approval of some minutes, right?
Yes. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from October 1st.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Is everybody here?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Move for adjournment.
And of course, the last thing is Peter says he moves to adjourn. I'll accept that. Second by Mr. Slavin on the end. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, Wareham. Sorry it was a long one, but it happens sometimes. Thank you.
Good night.